The town has employed Tom Terrill to represent us during the lawsuit. Commissioner Moore and I were appointed to the litigation committee to interact with Tom as the suit develops. During our meeting with Tom on March 16, he made some significant remarks that must be made public. Tom conveyed that during his many years of practicing law in North Carolina and having worked with towns on land use issues in more than 50 of the state's 100 counties, he had never, and emphasized never, met a team of staff employees that were more knowledgeable, more skilled, more competent, more professional than what he discovered when he encountered these three employees. He added, "Their expertise was unsurpassed." Commissioner Moore and I could tell Tom was not just saying nice words. It was obvious he was truly impressed. Those remarks give me great pride, as I'm sure it does the rest of the council, and I say thank you and congratulations on a job well done. Your service to our town is a shining example for all to emulate. Thank you. Mr. McCraw, if you would please come up and allow me to embarrass you for a moment.
Well, you're doing a good job so far.
Do you please face the public?
John, as Mayor Pro-Town, why don't you do that?
This is a letter of commendation that I prepared and sent to the town manager back in October with the intent that it be presented to Mr. McCraw, and it never was. I don't know why, but I wanted to correct that, what I believe to be an error. "October 5, 2015, to whom it may concern, subject commendation for Mr. Donnie McCraw. I take this opportunity to commend Mr. Donnie McCraw for his exceptional performance of duty for the period September 24 to October 5, 2015. Lake Lure experienced significant rainfall over the previous two weeks that required constant vigilance and unprecedented actions in the monitoring, management, and operation of our dam. After eight days or so of heavy rains, we were confronted with the threat of Hurricane Joaquin. While preparing for that potentially damaging situation, Joaquin stalled and turned somewhat, leaving Lake Lure to face a secondary rain event of historic proportions. This led to more extreme emergency management actions at the dam due to additional anticipated rainfall of four to 12 inches in a period of 24 to 48 hours. Countless others played significant roles in managing this event, including the town manager, police department, fire department, and lake operations, and they certainly deserve to be recognized. However, I wish to specifically commend Mr. Donnie McCraw, our dam operator, for his extreme dedication and devotion to his particular responsibilities during these extenuating circumstances. As the dam operator, Mr. McCraw seldom receives recognition for his performance unless something goes wrong. In this most recent situation, much could have gone wrong, and the result could have been much worse, even catastrophic. Mr. McCraw's knowledge, decisiveness, and expertise directly led to flood prevention and the protection of our property as well as the dam itself. These actions resulted in the best possible outcome from such a storm and event. As an employee of the town of Lake Lure, Mr. McCraw's performance reflects great credit upon himself and the town, and this is my thank you for a superb job. Respectfully, Stephen M. Webber." And a copy of that has been placed in your personnel file.
Steve, you got a call.
Somebody's going to make me look guilty.
Oh. You got the right one for him. Thank you, Stephen, for that. Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you all. Okay, item number five, staff reports.
We are working on the budget. We need to schedule a budget workshop with council and department heads sometime this month to give us a little direction. Probably is a long first meeting, but once we get that first meeting accomplished, I think it'll go a lot smoother to finish this off. Radar signs for Boys Camp Road arrived last week, and we just have to figure out where we're going to stick them. The manufacturers suggest someplace where the sun is shining about five hours per day, so that's something to keep in mind. We met with Spindale officials for the green line installation. We discussed the letter of intent, the cost, and then in our local agreement with Spindale. We installed "In God We Trust" signage in front of town hall in the council chambers that the mayor suggested, mentioned earlier. The best part about that is it was all free, so thank you, John. We're still accepting bids for the lakefront lot with boathouse for sale. This is an upset bid process, and we're accepting the first set of bids by the end of this month, and this property is located off of Buffalo Shoals Road, right beyond the dam. There's 100, it's the old EMS boathouse. There's 100 feet of shoreline with the boathouse, and it kind of, it's like it's pie-shaped and goes across Buffalo Shoals and ends to a point. There's some restrictions for it, but there is value there for the right person, so. We also have an opening on the asset management task force for a board member, and those applications can be downloaded on the, off the website under the volunteer section. Police department. The police department logged 704 activities in April, 94 traffic stops, four accidents, six total arrests, nine motorcycle mufflers were checked, and one roadside checkpoint. Also, April's pill drop brought in over 1,200 unused prescription and over-the-counter drugs. Public works. They continue to mulch around the parks and the recreation part of the town. We did our quarterly lead and copper testing for the town's water supply with no lead or copper detected in any samples. The dredge part, we cleaned out the pond behind the Lakeview store and some of the silt around the ABC docks. Clint and Dean have been working on buoy maintenance to reset the, some of the buoys and replace some of the buoys. We stocked fish last month, and the next thing, we're going to put riprap on the point of Morris Park to help the shoreline stabilization. Community development, there was 15 certificate of zoning compliance issued, two vacation rental operating permits issued, which brings our total vacation rental active to date is 256. We had two complaints logged, two complaints investigated, and two notice of violations issued. We have three abandoned dilapidated structures cases that are open, and we had five BOA hearings processed. The golf course, the golf course had a fantastic April. Total rounds for the month was 485 golf and 62 rounds of foot golf compared to last year, which had total rounds of 399. And Dale said that this first quarter was the busiest quarter he's had since he's been operating the golf course. They're working on a new chipping green and practice bunker and should be ready before Memorial Day weekend. Communications and branding, communications and the list of facts were sent to all sewer customers explaining reasons for upcoming rate increase. Working with the CMLC to develop additional signage for the expansion of Buffalo Creek Park, including new trail map signage and produce new signage for the ABC store to address parking challenges between the visitors to Pool Creek Park and the customers of the ABC store. And working with Lake Ops to develop some updated signage for the marina. And that's my report.
Very good. Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, regarding the radar science you mentioned, Commissioner Cameron and I are meeting with Chuck Amaker tomorrow morning to discuss the placement, so we will actually be out there on Boys Camp Road to do that. The Parks and Recreation Committee met on May the 5th at 1:30. The Buffalo Creek Trail update, about two-thirds of a mile has been completed of the Buffalo Creek Trail Extension, and there was some discussion two or three days prior to that meeting regarding emergency aspect of the trails and the size, the width, and so on. The fire department, the Peter Barr from the grant, or what it was, Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy, and several other principals met, and Mr. Barr is working up a memorandum of understanding regarding emergency access, but it will not be a problem. Parks and Rec also reported that they have oiled 53 eggs, goose eggs, this year, and so far, since the inception of the program seven years ago, they've oiled 450 eggs. So, the Flowering Bridge has had some theft of art items, which has amounted to about $1,000 in loss, so if you see anything disappearing or somebody picking up something that shouldn't, please report it. We want to get, get control of that. Saturday, the 4th of June, is the dedication of the sensory garden at the Flowering Bridge. And Linda, I never did get a time on that. Do you have that?
Yes. 2011. 11.
At 11? 11 to noon?
Wow.
11? Okay. Is the dedication of the sensory garden at the Flowering Bridge?
June 4, 7.
Who, what? Okay. I had to take off my hearing aids, so when I speak, you can hear me, so I can't hear you.
Can you see me now?
The golf course is hosting the chamber recharge in June, on June the 7th, so support our golf course. The Board of Adjustment met and had one vacation rental operating permit amendment, two vacation rental operating permit approvals, one zoning variance approval, and then one that was a no-show that was continued to this month. The Lake Structure Appeals Board was canceled due to no hearings, and that's all I have for you.
Very good. John?
The zoning and planning board met on Tuesday, April 19. There was...
Give me your microphone.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. There was one vacation rental permit request that was heard, and it was unusual that the zoning and planning board would hear that, but they had to because the request was, was not exempt from zoning and planning review because of the fact that there was an open certificate of zoning compliance permit and land disturbance permit for improvements on the property and the structure, so it was heard by the zoning and planning board and approved and sent on its way. There was a 25-by-30-foot freestanding deck approved for the, for the larger beach house at the beach down here across from the, from the inn, and that's, I think, has been, has been finished since our meeting. The, there was an issue with a fence in Lake Lure Village Resort. Lori Barnwell wanted a fence in her front yard, and she wanted a wire mesh on it, and wire mesh is not allowed in the front street setback, so there was considerable discussion on that, and it was decided to ask staff to create provisions to the fence regulations and bring them back to the board. There was also a review of amendments to the zoning regulations to clarify gardens, to clarify that gardens are allowed in specific districts as accessory uses, and we also worked on defining urban agriculture. Didn't reach a final consensus on that, but recommended that Mr. McLoughlin and Mr. Barrett work together to bring a proposed amendment to the ordinance back to the board, hopefully next month for review. Mr. Baldwin gave a planning projects update, and that was our meeting for April.
Thanks, John. Mary Ann?
The Lake Advisory Board this month had the, we spent about four hours with the Lake Lure Tours as our hosts, going around and looking at the shoreline, looking for items of concern, situations of disrepair that were to the point of dangerous, and two of those, Clint had already prepared the letters in regard to and had them ready to mail the next day. They have sets been notified and were noted in the manager's report. Things like lake structures that are not in compliance, looking for problem areas with the shoreline erosion and things like that. All of the things that were of concern were noted by our town clerk, Andy. And then the ABC board met, sales are up, profits are up. They hired an additional part-time employee because as things get busy, they need to have two people in the store at their busiest times, and they are happy that there are no immediate plans to move the location of the store. They always ask anything new, so they're, they're happy that for now, things are not moving.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. We had a regular meeting of the utilities board last Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Under the discussion was review of the funding for the new sewer green line project. There's a couple options there. The engineer has completed all the paperwork and a notebook about this thick that has been submitted now for the funding package to the state. Also, as an option, under the last year's bond referendum that passed, it appears we're eligible up to $3 million for, for this project or could be eligible up to it, so the mayor's kind enough to be working towards meeting with our legislators and seeing what it will take to get an application in to see if we could possibly get that $3 million bond issued there. Also, we're looking at, prior to Sam's meeting, the discussion had come up that we had a letter from Spindale saying that they would accept our sewerage and for a set rate, but since then, Sam has met with them, and I guess Bob, were you there also, or Sam?
No, I didn't go to that meeting.
Okay. But anyway, we're working to negotiate that agreement and get it into writing into contract form for everyone's review. And anything else would be, the only other item was discussion on the Flowering Bridge. We're aware that they need additional power on the other end of the bridge now with the heavy loads, so I asked for the utilities board to think about what the town could do to help them and what we could do on that end, and ask them to report back next month at next meeting, and we'll discuss it and see what we can do. So, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you all for that. Moving on to item number seven, public forum. We had no one sign up for the public forum, but would anybody change their mind, like to change their mind, come forward? We had a few latecomers. No. Kathy, you don't want to speak? I can't believe it.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes. Pat, would you like to come forward? Come on. You can't sit there.
Can we put cameras on the Flowering Bridge to protect us?
I think there are some there already. I don't know if they...
But we probably need more, don't we? What about using the cameras on the lake once in a while? Just take them off and put them on the bridge?
Yeah, that can be done, but I noticed down at the far end of the Flowering Bridge, there's one post with about four cameras on it.
But that's on one end.
Well, I don't know if they, okay. We'll see. We can, we can look into it. Thanks, Pat. Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none. Number eight, the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion regarding that?
Mr. Mayor, on item A, there's two sets of the minutes that need a minor correction. The first set of April 11th has the day of Tuesday, and it should be Monday, April 11th, and the last set from May the 1st was also a Monday versus a Tuesday. Other than that, I didn't see any corrections needed in those minutes.
Okay. I also, I think that developmental associates was not capitalized, if we want to get down to the really nitty-gritty, but you can add that in there, too. You got that, Andy? Okay. With those changes, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so moved.
Moved by Mary Ann. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Stephen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving on to unfinished business, consider approval of the whistleblower policy to be added to the town of Lake Lure Personnel Manual. We had some changes to that, so do you want to bring them up, Stephen?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I reviewed that policy, the revised policy, in comparison to the one we originally saw at the special meeting, and they, all the changes were made, and I have no, no questions, no concerns at all with the policy as drafted currently, and I would make a motion that we approve it.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, someone might want to explain to our people here why that was asked for. It serves a purpose.
Yeah, I don't mind. I don't mind doing that. Julie, or, yeah, Julie from the finance and also Kat from the police department put together a grant for body cameras for our police officers. Well, part of the state requirement of giving us that money requires a whistleblower policy be in effect, and that's why we have to, we had to come up with one and put it into effect. And I don't know why, our police department don't, doesn't even use whistles anymore, so I don't know why we need that. Aside the point.
Digital whistles.
So, but yeah, that's why we needed it, is for that body camera usage.
Stephen, you just can't hear the whistles because you're talking.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, you're right.
And I don't know if I, if I have it correctly in my mind, but it is to protect employees who report wrongdoing of some kind.
Right. You're correct.
Okay. With that, a motion's been made and seconded. Do I hear any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. Audience participation, that's pretty good. It is really unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item number 10, 10A. Consider requests submitted by Donna Morrison requesting use of the community hall for yoga classes. Donna, you want to go forward?
Yes.
And give your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Donna Morrison, and I live at 190 Hilltop Court in Lake Lure Village Resort. And I started teaching yoga here four summers ago. I used to teach at the Firefly Cove Dock, and it started two people, and it ended at the end of the summer, about nine people would show up by boat. And then I left because I wasn't here full-time, and someone else took over a class in a barn, and those people have been going there, and it's grown to about, almost 20 people. Some days, there's only five. But I called because I live here full-time now, and several people in the, in the community have said, "Oh, you should teach yoga." I have a studio in Asheville, but people don't want to drive that far, so I thought I'd do an outreach program, and I called the town hall, and I spoke to Chris Braun at the time, and he said, "Oh, we would support that because there used to be a yoga class here, and it'd be a great thing for the community, and, and how, how did you want to work it?" And I said, "Well," he, I was told I could use the room for free, and he said, "Well, that'd be great." And so he said, "Just call me when you get settled." I was taking care of my mom down in South Carolina. So, I said, "I'd like to start in May." And then I called back, and he was no longer here, and I was told I had to pay rent, and I wanted to keep the price really low, like $5 to $8 per student rather than the normal $15 a class. We just need a clean space with a little bit of music, and I was told Wednesday night, there's nothing happening here, and I could just leave and lock the door, and I could use the space. But then I was told I had to pay $50 to rent it, and I may only have four people show up at $5 or $8, and so I don't want to do it if it's going to be in the negative. I'd be willing to pay a percentage to the town, so you could make a little bit of money, better than making no money, but to be able to offer something to the community. And there's probably about 20 of us that meet at the barn, but there's little spiders there, and it's far for some people, so I have a lot of letters for the ladies that couldn't show up tonight, and there's several in the audience that are supporting it, so I just wanted to come and give it a shot and ask the board if they would consider. Wednesday night, I would maybe have a 5:30 class or 5:15, and as Chris explained to me, I would have a gentle class for older people, maybe even use some of the chairs, like a chair yoga, then have a 15-minute break after that class and do a more vigorous mat-on-the-floor class, and then lock up and close the door, and it would be every Wednesday night. So, I'd like you to consider it. It's something for the community. There's really nothing around here. There's no gyms, there's no, there's no, really no place. I mean, the library offers free space for clogging and other activities, and the Episcopal Church offered me their space for free, but it's very small, and if more than five, six people come, there wouldn't be enough room, but this is a beautiful room, and I hope you consider it.
Yeah. Donna, one of, one of the reasons is that it's partly consistency because when we have people come in here, there's a $50 charge for cleanup. Now, I'm sure we can work out something because there's not a lot of, you're not serving food, you're not doing a lot of things. So, I'm sure we could work something out, but that's, that's the reason for it. It's not for us to make money on an event like that, but rather for cleaning. And so, I'll throw it open to the council for discussion and see if there's some kind of a compromise that we could make.
I don't think we need to charge if they're going to just, you know, they're not serving food or anything. You just leave it like you found it.
Yeah.
And we do it month to month, and, you know, if there's, and, and, you know, see how it works.
Do a trial period, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just bring a little CD player, and everybody brings their mats and a blanket, and you're pretty much either in the chair or on the floor, and then lock up afterwards, so it's not being used, I heard, Wednesday nights.
Right. If, if we need a motion to that effect, I'll make a motion that we give you group permission to use the town meeting room here at no charge on a trial basis and see how it goes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded. Do I hear for any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, John said, "On a, on a trial basis," and that was what we did once before.
Right.
You know, if somebody wants to rent the hall, and it happened to fall on a Wednesday, there might be an issue. One of the differences being that when we had it before, there was no charge. If this is a charge, and you said you would be willing to do it on a percentage...
Most definitely.
...basis, I, I think it would be good to, this is going to be weekly.
Yes.
So, if a trial basis means try it for a month or two...
Yes.
And then revisit to see how it's, it's working out.
And there's two reasons I have to charge a little bit. I've been teaching for 16 years. If you have it free, sometimes people don't value it. That's number one. Number two, I have a life, too, and there might be a Wednesday night I would like to grab a teacher from Asheville. grab a teacher from Asheville. Well, I can't ask her to come down if she gets no money, right, to drive an hour and back, and I want to keep it consistent for the community. I can't all of a sudden on Monday say, I have to go out of town, or there's no class. So I would like to have that. And also, in the future, if it built to a community type of thing, which we're hoping that it'll be, then we could maybe do a percentage, and the town would make a little bit of money, and why not? You probably need it for your budget, right? So that's my idea. And I would like it to be consistent, not just so one night I'm here and then one night I'm not. So I have to think about, I've been doing it a long time in churches and buildings, and, you know, you have to value it and honor it, and also have a backup plan if I can't be here. So that, those are my reasons.
Right. Well, we've done the trial basis on exceptions to the fee schedule, simply because town council voted at one time, we will not do any more fee waivers. So we have been turning down fee waivers, but on a trial basis to let it see where it goes.
Sure.
That's a temporary basis.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
On both sides.
Stephen?
You mentioned an eight-week series, first as an eight-week series and then as a permanent class. When would you like to start that eight-week series?
Right away.
Tomorrow?
No, probably the following week, so I can get the word out.
Okay. So what if we amended the motion to a trial basis starting the 18th of May for that eight-week period, and then you come back at the end of that eight weeks?
Sure. That sounds good.
And report back to us, and if there's any issues that we can, need to bring up, or if there's any issues you need to bring up.
Right. I will also devise a waiver that, for liability reasons, because I've taught in other places, like outreach places, that says this person does it at their own risk, and there's no liability to the town, and they signed that.
So that would put you back at our July meeting, July the 12th.
Yeah.
Let's say use it between now and July, rather.
Right. Right.
And there's also another teacher that teaches at the barn in the morning. She's going to keep that going, and I sub for her, so I will check with her that she can sub for me, and I think that would be a great, a great thing to offer the community. I mean, when I moved here, just in the summers, there's nothing to do if you don't drink, and I don't drink alcohol, I don't go to Chimney Rock and go to the tiki bar, so I like to have something for the community. I think it would be a great asset.
We appreciate you offering that to everyone.
Okay.
Okay. The motion with its modification has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Would you like the letters from the ladies?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. I know that probably wasn't strictly by Robert's rules, because the thing was modified, but we expedited it. Okay, presentation, item B, presentation concerning a proposed renaming of the Donald Ross Nature Trail. Linda?
Good evening, council. Linda Turner from 211 Hawx Nest Trail in Lake Lure. And I'm just going to read this, and then I'm going to hand it out to you, and you can review it and ask me questions if you want to. At the March council meeting, Jim Walters, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board, presented a first-time policy on naming, renaming town park facilities, which was unanimously approved by council that night. In keeping with the renaming process as described in that document, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of a new name for the Donald Ross Nature Trail. As we've learned through research and debate over the years, there is no real evidence that Donald Ross designed our golf course or had any direct involvement. While he was very active in the region in the 1920s, and the course carries some traditional Donald Ross features, the fact is that our course was designed and the construction supervised by Wayne Stiles of the firm Stiles and Van Cleek of Boston. While there are no intentions to do so now, what if the golf course land were repurposed at some future time to better meet the needs of the community? The Donald Ross name would have even less significance for our town. And unless our current hikers are also golfers, it's unlikely that the name Donald Ross carries any name recognition even now. While we could perhaps justify a loose connection to our golf course, Donald Ross has no connection to our hiking trails. Hiking trails are named after individuals such as Bartram or Muir, because these individuals were trailblazers, literally. We, the members of the Parks and Recreation Department, have unanimously voted that the Donald Ross Nature Trail be renamed the Ditmer-Watts Nature Trail for the following reasons. Ed Ditmer and Martin Watts literally hacked their way through thick underbrush, fallen trees, and scrub pine for months and months with nothing but their own determination to create a series of trails that would provide a walking trail for residents and visitors. They really were trailblazers in the original sense of that word. I don't think even they had any idea of what this trail would eventually become, a well-laid-out, attentively-maintained, intimate trail system that attracts thousands of hikers, walkers, strollers, dog walkers every year. Its proximity to the golf course and integration with the school keeps its scope up close and community-focused. Their contribution is really of a most extraordinary nature. With no consideration for their own safety, comfort, or weariness, they forged this private and personal pathway out of the woods and created a beautiful intimate retreat with natural ups and downs and backs and forths. Without their efforts, there would be no trail system there now. The number of volunteer hours they clocked would truly be staggering if they had been recorded. While there are many excellent criteria for naming or renaming park facilities, such as descriptive geographical locations, significant physical features, and historical significance, the policy also provides for, and I quote now, honoring a living individual whose gift or contribution is extraordinarily beneficial to the town. The singular achievement of these two men has blessed this town with a truly special place where visitors and residents alike can enjoy the beauty and diversity of nature in a quiet and secluded spot. We chose to retain the words "nature trail" because they do convey the intimacy and personal nature of this trail system. This remarkable gift to the town was always freely given, with no thought of anything other than maybe a "thank you, looks great" comment every now and then, and I'm not even sure about that. Their sheer joy in being in the great outdoors and doing something they loved, I'm sure was all the payback they were looking for. It is an honor for our board to present this recommendation. The only hard part has been getting Ed and Martin to accept our proposal, because their modesty keeps getting in the way. And so we, the Parks and Recreation Board of the Town of Lake Lure, recommend to council that the name of the Donald Ross Nature Trail be changed to the Ditmer-Watts Nature Trail, and a plaque be placed at the trailhead describing how and why this trail system was developed. And that's my presentation.
Sounds like a great idea. I'd like a motion that we do that.
Motion made by John.
I'll second it. I remember when they did that trail, they used their own tools and chainsaws.
Yeah.
I was at the Parks and Recreation meeting when we discussed this, and yes, they were truly reluctant to accept it, and our new policy does say that if we name a park after a living person, then they must accept it before it can be done. And they did, so after a little convincing, but they did it.
Arm twisting, I think it's called.
And Donald Ross did not do our golf course.
Yeah, right.
So there's a motion, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Thank you. I also want to mention that we'll be working with Valerie Hoffman on the new signage for the new, for the Ditmer-Watts Nature Trail, with all the branding that we're trying to bring into.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
There's going, I'm going to propose an item during the month for discussion next month at council meeting that might affect signage, so I would recommend you hold off on that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Linda. Okay, item number 10C is a discussion concerning ABC Board licensing. Mary Ann, you want to drive that?
Yes. It came to my attention that the rules for a restaurant for, well, I think it would be primarily restaurants, but small businesses that serve food and want to serve beer and wine have some obstacles in Lake Lure. Chris Callahan, last month, looked this up, and we are in a classification in the town of Lake Lure that is different from the classification in Chimney Rock or Forest City, and I believe Spindale is the same as we are, and we don't have a very good understanding of how that came to be, why it is the way that it is, or if it can be changed, how we would go about that. We don't know if it has something to do with a decision by town council, or if it has to do with state laws at the time that we voted to have an ABC store. But a small business in Lake Lure that wants to serve beer and wine has to first pay several thousand dollars for a liquor license, even though they don't want to sell liquor. They don't want to be a bar.
Again, that's not true of Chimney Rock.
But true. That's not the case in Chimney Rock. We know of restaurants there that serve beer and wine. They did not have to pay the extra several thousand dollars for a liquor license. So what I'm asking tonight is for town council to direct the ABC store, we discussed it briefly at our last meeting, to contact and gather information from the state ABC Board and look at why that exists. We think it has something to do with the fact that we got the ABC store and had the vote and so forth years ago, and state laws may have changed, or it may have been the desire of town council at that time to be very conservative in what they asked for or had approved, but we're not sure. So we, I'm asking that we ask the ABC Board to do some investigation and see what they can tell us about what we can do and what the options are, so that we can look at it and decide if we need to make some changes.
Well, if we did that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if we did that and voted to move this forward tonight, when we discuss it again, would there be something in our packet with the facts and the information that we're uncovering?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah.
Could I have a motion to have a recommendation go to the ABC Board to investigate our structure and what we might become?
I'll make that motion.
A motion made by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'd second that.
Second by Stephen. Any further discussion? I just want to say, I have a concept of a Chardonnay and yoga class.
She didn't hear that.
I just said-
She didn't hear that.
I had a concept of a yoga class with wine, but anyway, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous? If I can, may John.
I have a question. Will I speak to the new board about the details of the timing and schedule?
Yeah, I'll talk to them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, item number 10D, in accordance with GS 143-318-dot-11A3, for attorney-client privilege to discuss litigation between the Town of Lake Lure and Eisenbrow Self-Jones et al. So we will, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Bob. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mary Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?